Well, good afternoon, everyone. I think we will get this town hall meeting underway. And my name is Peter Ricketts. I'm the Provost and Vice President Academic. And I'm delighted to welcome you all to this town hall meeting to discuss the discussion paper that's been developed by the Administrative and Academic Restructuring Committee. So, welcome, and really appreciate you participating in this and being involved. Of course, for those who were unable to be here today in person, we are video streaming this, and it will be available for watching on the web. So remember, anything you do or say will be recorded and used for whatever purposes. But you are on camera and you are on mics, so that's something that has been done before here, and it's certainly a good way for people who are unable to participate to actually get to see the presentation and hear the comments that have been raised. So, just in terms of logistics, there are...I will start off with a short presentation, just to guide you through the discussion document and to highlight the main points of the document. And then we will open it up for comments and questions and discussion. And there are microphones, one down here and one over there. And we would ask that if you wish to ask a question or make a comment, if you would come up and take your turn at one of the two mics, rather than picking the mics up and moving them around. That way, it's better for the video podcasting, and also we'll make sure that your question is clearly recorded. So, I will now just give you a short overview of the discussion document. It was posted...you haven't had long to read it, so this will help remind you and probably remind me and members of the committee of its contents as well. But hopefully, it will open up and stimulate a good and healthy discussion. First of all, I'm very, very pleased to be joined by members of the committee, the AARC, as we've been calling it. And so I'm just going to read through the members of the committee. I know most of you are familiar with them. Some of them could not be here today, and they do send their apologies for that, but I'm very grateful to see quite a number of the members here today, and grateful to see they've been willing to sit up at the front here and join me in the presentation, because I think this paper has been very, very much a committee effort. And so that's something that we wanted to make sure everybody understood very clearly. So, the members of the committee are myself as Chair of the Committee. I should start out by saying I started off by being co-chair of the committee, but my co-chair decided to go to Waterloo. And so I ended up being the Chair of the Committee after being here for about five minutes at Carleton. So that was great. But I do want to take the opportunity to thank Ferret and Hamdulapua for all of the work that he did in getting the committee established and getting it working and developing the mandate and all of that. We're very much appreciative of the input that he had on this committee. And so, as I mentioned, the names of the committee, those who are here, I just asked them to stand so that they can be recognized and you can see who they are. So we have Paul Keen, who is representing the Faculty of Arts and Social Sciences; Tom Sherrett, representing the Faculty of Science; Stephen Murphy, representing Sprott School of Business; Jonathan Beddoes, from the Faculty of Engineering and Design; Diana Magery, Faculty of Public Affairs, and Diana couldn't be here today and sends her regrets; Paul T. Berge, Faculty of Graduate Studies and Research; Aviva Freeman, who is the interim Vice President, Research and International; Janice O'Farrell, the Director of Admissions; Sheila McCollum, from the Faculty of Arts and Social Sciences, and representing Administrative Academic Staff; Jason McDonald, who's Director of University Communications; Kimberly Phillip, representing the Graduate Students Association, she's President; and Eric Halliwell, representing the Carleton University Students Association as President. And I'd also like to recognize and give a very special thanks to my executive assistant, Nora Volmer, who is sitting right at the back. Stand up, Nora. And to thank her for giving such wonderful secretarial support and administrative support to the work of the committee. Thanks, Nora, very much. Really appreciate everything you're doing.[325.14][325.14][applause] So I thought I'd want to get at least one round of applause from the presentation this morning, so that...this afternoon. So off, let's go. So, this committee was established, and it was given...it developed its own mandate in many ways. And I think all of you are familiar with that mandate, because it has been published for quite some time now. And really, there were four key elements to the mandate that was defined for this committee. The first one was what I would call a strategic mandate, and that was essentially to look and see if the structure of the faculties and the programs and the way we organize our programs, academic programs here at Carleton, could be realigned or reorganized or restructured in any way to better support the goals and objectives of the university's strategic plan, Defining Dreams. The second mandate is what I would call the collaboration and innovation mandate, and that is that the committee was tasked with exploring what opportunities there could be for increasing collaboration and cohesion among the faculties and programs, and really helping to focus us as a university to the kinds of programming that would be most effective for us as we move forward into the 21st century. And those words, such as future-oriented, interdisciplinary, innovative, locally-based, globally-orientated, these sorts of things. So really, a way to look at, can we increase the way in which we collaborate and innovate with each other? The third mandate was a communication mandate, and that's extraordinarily important in any exercise at the university, but perhaps particularly so for a task such as restructuring, because when you mention the word restructuring, it usually starts sending a shudder through people's spine and a cold, you know, a cold stab goes up the spine as you think of that, because people have all sorts of connotations that they associate with that word, restructuring. And so perhaps for this particular exercise, the issue of communication was particularly important, and also because we were working...we are working under a fairly tight timeframe in terms of trying to get this exercise completed. And so we had a very strong mandate to seek the input of the Carleton community, both internal and external, as part of its inquiry. And so that was something that we've taken very seriously, and that is obviously one of the exercises that we're engaging with today. And then the fourth mandate is the efficiency and effective mandate, if you like, to see if there are opportunities for greater efficiency to the way in which the academic and administrative structures of the university are functioning. And can we identify ways in which we can more effectively direct resources or allocate resources to support the academic mission of the university? So that's really, in a nutshell, the mandate that was defined primarily by the committee itself, as it sought to determine what it wished to do. As I mentioned, the consultation and communication agenda was extraordinarily important to us, and we really took a four-pronged approach to this. The first was an invitation to individuals to present to the committee in person, and we identified a number of individuals who were in positions to give that input to the committee: deans, associate deans, directors, chairs, managers. And we felt that that was an important thing, group of people to communicate with, but we also extended a broader invitation, that if anybody wished to make a presentation to the committee, then we would seek to accommodate that. That was also associated with an invitation to submit written statements to the committee, knowing that not everybody would want to meet in person, and knowing that we actually wouldn't have time to meet with everybody in person, and so the opportunity to send written submissions. We also built in the notion of this town hall as part of a communication process to the broader community of the university, and that we would have some kind of an interim document that we would distribute ahead, that we would have a town hall meeting, and then invite and seek feedback from the general community, basically on the ideas that the committee has got to at this point in time. So we received about 43 communications in all, both written and oral, and we were able to accommodate all of the requests that people made to actually appear in person before the committee. And we also received all the submissions in confidence, and we had quite a discussion about that at the committee, because we wanted to make sure that when people came before us, they could feel at ease in saying what they really wanted to say, as opposed to what they thought somebody else might want them to say or might not want them to say. And so we received all those submissions in confidence. Some people chose to share the submissions that they made with the committee, and we said that was fine. If you wished to do that, then that was their choice. We established a website for which the...to provide updates and backgrounds to the committee, and I trust that all of you have accessed that website at some point, if not for the first time approaching this town hall meeting, just to get the document. But also, I suspect, a number of you have been following this website all along, and we've posted updates, the mandates, summaries of meetings, and various others, information that we have been dealing with over the last month and a half or so. The discussion paper and town hall is what we're engaged in now, and so that is a very important part of the consultation. And we really do thank you for being here, and really do want to hear your feedback, both positive and negative, or neutral for that matter, in terms of the ideas that are presented in the discussion paper. And that will be extraordinarily important for us as a committee, as we enter into the final stage of our mandate, which is then to present, develop a final report for submission to the President by mid-October. And so that is the communication process that we've been engaged in. So, the document has quite a lot in it, and I'm just going to really highlight a few points. One of the things that we felt was very important to feed back to you is what we heard. And that's not to say so-and-so said this and so-and-so said that, so, you know, what do you think of that? It was very much to say, what kind of consistent themes emerged from the various presentations and submissions that we received? And so this document attempts to highlight those, some of which were driven by individual comments that had a particular theme, and sometimes maybe a little more esoteric. But nevertheless, the committee feels that these are the main consistent themes that we heard. First of all, we heard very strong support for maintaining the current faculty structure. Obviously, one of the things that this committee has wrestled with is, if you're going to look at restructuring, do you engage in major, major faculty restructuring? So do we look at the number of faculties we have, the size of the faculties, the academic makeup of the faculties? And of course, you do put that on the table, and you do look at it, you do consider it. And indeed, we did hear submissions from individuals who suggested ways in which the current faculty structure could be restructured and reorganized and regrouped. But we also heard from an extraordinarily large number of people how they felt that the current faculty structure was appropriate for Carleton, that it was working quite well, very well in some areas, maybe not so well in others, but that it wasn't so much the faculty structure that was the problem, but it was perhaps other things that needed to be looked at to help make those faculties work a lot better and to work with each other perhaps a lot better. So that was a very, very strong message that we got, was really that the current faculty structure is quite appropriate for Carleton and has some very strong rationale, and perhaps the sense that it hasn't been in place all that long, so maybe we could let it function longer so that we could make it even more successful. But tied with that very strong theme for supporting the current faculty structure was the, you know, the ideas to improve the ability of the current structure to work better, to better meet the needs of the university, and to better meet the needs of society. And so while there was strong support for the current faculty structure, that was not support for the status quo, and we got that message very, very clearly. We heard incredibly consistently, amazingly so in fact, how much there is a need for a greater institutional push for interdisciplinary and interfacal...multidisciplinary and interfaculty and multifaculty collaboration and cooperation. This came up time and time and time again. In fact, I would suggest it was the single most consistent theme that we heard from virtually everybody. And so that has definitely rung true with the institution, and it's definitely something that is felt to be important. And that links in very much to the strategic themes of Defining Dreams. It's no doubt that when you define strategic themes for an institution, you always...it's always a bit of a dangerous game. You define the strategies, and then you won't, you know, and then people say, "Well, okay, yes, that really talks to me," and other people will say, "Well, where do I fit into that? I'm not sure what that says to me and my program or my individual interests." But actually, what we heard from a lot of people was that now they've had...there's been some time to think about these themes, and they've been out there for a while. They have generated an enormous amount of interest, and they are clearly unifying themes that provide the basis for a lot of collaboration and innovation at the university. And so I think a lot of people now are looking at the ways in which they do and can fit and contribute to those themes. We also heard a lot of...we heard a lot of individual suggestions about how individual units might be moved from one faculty to another, or that they might be rearranged in some particular way to function a little better and to address problems of lack of collaboration and lack of cooperation and lack of resource support in certain areas. And one of the things that the committee kind of came up with more, and it wasn't so much that we heard, "You need to be more consistent in what you do," but we did hear from a lot of people, and it became clear to us that there is not a consistent use, in fact, quite an inconsistent use, of different types of units within the university. Colleges mean one thing, schools may mean one thing in one faculty and a different thing in another faculty, the institutes are used in very different ways. And so, you know, what we heard was that perhaps there is a theme coming out here that says if we had some more consistency around the way in which we define these subunits within the faculty, that we might be able to address some of the issues of collaboration and greater efficiency, and things that we heard. One area that we heard from quite a number of people was the role of graduate studies and research within the university, and that perhaps it could be given more prominence and more influence within the academic structure of the university. And another thing we heard was that there are incredible opportunities...well, actually, there are lots of things going on right now, which would be determined as successful professional development initiatives, but there are great opportunities for Carleton to further develop, expand professional development and continuing education, and that this is an area where we need to seriously look at an institutional direction, and perhaps at some structure that would support those opportunities that can generate revenue for the university. We also heard that a lot of comments about the budget and the resource allocation process, always an interesting topic of conversation within any university that I've ever worked at. And the consistent theme was that people want to see that the academic priorities and needs of the university are driving the budget and the resource allocation process. Now, often, I mean, that does happen to a large degree, but sometimes it's not as transparent as it could be, or it's not as apparent as it could be. And there was certainly a lot of comments about that. And that one of the key areas, and where I thought it was particularly interesting, that we had a consistent theme related to this, was the need to establish incentives to promote and reward innovation and interdisciplinarity, and that I thought was a very important theme to come out. There was also a support for some kind of a central academic fund that could provide seed money and support for strategic innovation in the academic areas of the university. So having identified some consistent themes, what kind of proposals and ideas could we come up with at this stage? And so the committee has, you know, we haven't probably given this as much debate as we could do, but we did feel that we wanted to identify some clear areas that we could present to you as the Carleton community, both in terms of ideas that we're looking at, but also in order to consult with you more widely than we have done up to this point and get some feedback from you. So here are, under a number of headings, that we defined sort of proposals that we're thinking about. Under faculty restructuring, we, as I said, we did receive some proposals for changing the number and configuration of faculties, but we really had no real compelling reasons that were given to us as to why we would embark upon such a major exercise at this point in time at Carleton, and why not, why we wouldn't allow the current faculty structure to succeed. And when we looked at faculty structures at other universities that are similar and comparable, or even some larger and some smaller than Carleton, we, I mean, we don't have an abnormally large number of faculties, we don't have peculiar and weird faculty arrangements, but we do have some faculty structures that are quite particular to Carleton's strengths and Carleton's history and academic profile. So we did not feel that there were compelling reasons that were made as to why that would be an exercise to engage in at this point of time, and that it might actually divert us from thinking about things that could be more exciting and more interesting and more related to moving us forward on a strategic direction. Secondly, we talked about strengthening interdisciplinarity and innovation. And so we came up with a couple of proposals here that we'd like to float out and to get your feedback on. One was this notion of what we might call innovation colleges, that we could see the possibility of establishing some institutional level, that is, interfaculty, multifaculty, in fact, colleges, that would function in a sort of networks of excellence model, and that these could be focused on strategic themes that the university wishes to move forward on. Obviously, the Defining Dreams themes are particularly noticeable here. We heard lots and lots of suggestions as to how we could better promote the university as a center of excellence in environment and sustainability. We heard similar suggestions around the area of health. We heard others in the area of global affairs and international affairs, and in the areas of public policy. And so, you know, it's quite...and yet, you know, the comments we were getting was that although we see these areas of excellence scattered around the university, when you look at Carleton from the perspective of somebody outside looking in, it's not apparent that we're necessarily doing that. Now, obviously, in the area of public affairs, it is apparent, but sometimes when you're looking from the outside, there aren't structures which actually say that this is what we do at Carleton. And we think, actually, the great strength of what we do is, is that not everybody is in these fields is in the same department. They're actually all over the place, all over the university, and that's the incredible strength. So perhaps if these innovation colleges, if you think of them as horizontal networks across what is otherwise a hierarchical structure of faculties, as a vertical structure, that these might be a way in which we could actually do this more effectively and also present that public view to the world. And at a subfaculty level, we are looking at the idea of the multidisciplinary school as the major subfaculty unit. So again, you know, it goes back to the point I made, that we had lots of suggestions around how programs and units could be brought together under multidisciplinary schools. And so, for example, we had a number of suggestions which indicated that a School of Life Sciences in the Faculty of Science would be good, and this was linked not only to the programs in science, but also to a proposal that was to...that neuroscience might want to move into the Faculty of Science, and if that were to happen, where would they fit? You know, how would they function within a Faculty of Science? And perhaps within a School of Life Sciences, this might be a good area. A School of Environmental Sciences was another one that was suggested. And so we would like to explore that notion of perhaps multidisciplinary schools being a way in which we organize the academic units and departments and institutes within a faculty, and that this might give, again, a little more coherence to the subfaculty level in which we organize our academic activities. The fourth area was, and it goes back to the point I made earlier, that we heard many comments about enhancing the role of graduate studies and research in the university. Now, some of these focused on the concern to expand what I would call small g, small s, small r, graduate studies and research generally within the university, in order to enhance our profile as a research-intensive university, and to strengthen the area of advanced knowledge and advanced education within graduate studies and research. But we also, in terms of structuring, heard some ideas as to how that might be done through changing the role that the Faculty of Graduate Studies and Research plays. So one idea that was suggested was that perhaps that instead of a dean of graduate studies, we would have an associate provost or an associate vice president of graduate studies. And some universities have moved to that direction, although sometimes that's been associated with a sort of decentralization of the functions of the Faculty of Graduate Studies, and we didn't feel that that was something that we wanted to look at at all. Perhaps the dean of graduate studies or this new associate vice president could report to the VP of Research and International. Would that give it a higher profile within the research mandate of the university? And we also heard proposals that some of the graduate schools, some of the programs that are units, that are graduate-only units, might be better off housed directly under the Faculty of Graduate Studies, as is the case in some universities. So these were ideas that were presented to us that we would like to get some feedback on as to how we might, or other ideas that we could enhance the role for graduate studies and research at the university, and not see that as being pitted against undergraduate studies. And the fourth group was finance and resourcing, and to focus here, the main points were to focus on investment in academic priorities. A lot of people talked about the need to think in the terms of investing in academic development, as opposed to just always sort of focusing on the costs. Now, of course, when you talk about investing, you look at the costs as well as the amount of money you're putting in, but you're also looking at a longer-term concept, and I think that that actually fits in with the way in which the budgeting process is developing at this university. Another thing that was mentioned to us, and again, it fits into, I think, what is beginning to happen, and that is to increase the rewards and incentives that exist for innovation and for interdisciplinarity. And that focused around the ideas of looking how we might further develop the enrollment incentive budgeting process that's admittedly just beginning, so we, you know, we're just beginning to roll that out. But perhaps we need to look at that more, even more drastically than, as a way to reward innovation and to reward interdisciplinarity and to reward strategic collaboration. And then finally, under their, this notion of creating some kind of an academic, strategic academic innovation fund that would help seed some of the great ideas that are being generated around the university, and sometimes just need a small amount of money to actually get them going. And again, I think that ties into some of the things... And again, I think that ties into some of the things that Duncan and I are dealing with under the task force on restructuring, on financial resourcing, where, again, we're looking for ways in which we can support and encourage and reward innovation and new ideas. So, those are the major areas of proposal that we are presenting in our paper. We, obviously, we now want to engage in a discussion and feedback with you, and so, just sort of going through the major points again, and, excuse me repeating this, but I know you haven't had an awful long time to read the paper, so just to highlight the points again. We think that major faculty restructuring appears to be off the table, unless you want to come and give us some really good ideas why we might want to look further at that. We want to promote and reward interdisciplinarity, innovation, and strategic directions. We want to promote efficiency and effectiveness. We want to keep things simple. Quite frankly, a number of people told us that, you know, when you look at Carleton, it's quite complicated when you try and sort out, you know, what we offer and the programs we offer, and for students, and some of the liaison people were saying, you know, it's quite difficult sometimes to explain to students how they might do certain things that they want to do, or how we present ourselves, and so if we can actually make things simpler, it could help a lot. We wanted to support flexibility and agility, and that was, again, mentioned to us a lot. You know, we need to be agile, we need to be flexible, we need to be able to maybe take some risks and do some things. We always have to be very, very careful, you know, that goes without saying. We are entrusted with public funds and tuition money from our students, and we are entrusted to use that money wisely and effectively, and we don't go off on wild goose chases. But at the same time, we want to be able to respond to some of those interesting areas that come up and where society is changing, and be able to do that in an effective way. We want to stimulate excitement, and quite frankly, I think Carleton, you know, I've only been here a few months, and I'm really excited about this place. And I think that this is an incredibly exciting university, and it's been made even more exciting with all the students coming back now for the last couple of weeks. But what I see is enormous excitement, an enormous feeling that Carleton can do so much more if we just can tap those resources and work together. And I think if we can come out of this restructuring exercise with a whole sort of burst of new energy and excitement, I think we'll have done a long way to doing the job, and maybe have done something rather unique, because I'm not sure I've ever seen that come out of a restructuring exercise, but anyway. And finally, we want to create new opportunities, new opportunities for faculty, for staff, for students to be engaged in all sorts of new ideas. And so, the kinds of ideas that we're trying to propose around restructuring are really geared to how we can do things in a way to kind of unleash this capacity, incredible capacity that we know we have as an institution. So, you know, are we on the right track? I think all of us are asking that question, you know, are we spinning our wheels here? Are we on the right track? So, please tell us, tell us today. Tell us in email, you have the, you can email comments and suggestions to us. We are working on a tight timeframe, but quite frankly, you've got something to say to us, it's going to be in your mind over the next few days, and if you let it last any longer, you'll be doing something else, or you'll forget it, or whatever. So, we want your feedback, so, and we're meeting next on September the 25th as a committee to start the deliberations around our final report. So, if you can actually get us your comments and feedback, actually by September the 24th, that would be great, because then we can start thinking about them as we begin our deliberations. And in the document, it does say, if you can get your feedback in by the end of business on Thursday, the 24th, you know, we'll start looking at those. But we are going to open and receive submissions up to the end of business on Monday, September the 28th, and all of your feedback and all of your comments will be considered by the committee and included in our deliberations. And then, we will hope, and we will have a final report to the president by mid-October, and we will breathe a collective sigh. But that is, it's an aggressive agenda, but anyway, we're committed to doing that. So, that's the end of my presentation, and so I'm just delighted now to just open the floor to you. If you have any comments, as I say, if you could come up and use the mics either side here, I would also invite members of the committee to say anything or add anything that I may have not covered properly, or that I've missed out, or there may be certain things that they would like to highlight, and I would certainly invite the committee members to make any comments as we go through the next hour, well, forty, fifty minutes of discussion. So, Angelo, you're the first at the mic, and it's all yours, and it should be working. And please forgive me, I don't, won't know all your names, so I'll just go like this, because, see, I've said Angelo now, so you think, oh, I know everybody's name, but I happen to know the name of the president of QAS. Okay?
Okay, so I don't have to introduce myself. I'm also a math professor, so my comments will be as a math prof, as opposed to the president of QASA, since none of what I'm going to say has been vetted by anybody in the committees and steering either. However, I have a few concerns, and I'd like to address to the committee and yourself and senior management. Is one, first I'll quote from a very old document dated in 1952 by the Auto Association for the Advancement of Learning, and it says that its objects and purposes are, the objects and purposes are, A, the advancement of learning, B, to the dissemination of knowledge, and then various other things that are of slightly less interest right now, but always very important as well, the intellectual, social, moral, and physical development of its members and the betterment of its community, and C, the establishment and maintenance of a non-sectarian college with university powers. This is in the Carleton University Act of 1952. So far as I'm concerned, this act is still in force and has not been amended, at least this part has not been amended. What concerns me is what I've read in the actual discussion paper. I just have to find the passage. So, under mandate and strategy on page two, this is a September the 18th, 2009 document that's on the web, in paragraph, I guess, three, depending on how you count it, the goal, presumably the goal here is speaking about the goal of this committee arc, is to ensure that the university is providing staff, faculty, and students with the best possible academic and research environment that is increasingly focused on innovation and on developing solutions to real-world problems. I have no objection whatsoever with the first part, the part that comes before and. If it had just stopped on innovation, this would be compatible with the Carleton University Act. Adding, however, developing solutions to real-world problems appears to me to be a very serious restriction of the function of a university, in particular, this one, which is referring, which has been referred to in the Act as the dissemination of knowledge and advancement of learning, of course, has been the job of every single university on this planet ever since their inception nine hundred years ago. However, to restrict ourselves now to be looking at, at least, it's apparent, it's apparent, right, there seems to be an implication that in the future, we will be looking at hiring faculty, because it does say there, providing staff, faculty, and students. It's the and that bothers me, as a mathematician, and and usually because of conjunction, if it was an or, it's a different story, but we have an and here. And that perhaps what bothers me is really the fact that there seems to be an implication that we're going to be looking to hire faculty in areas that, in fact, will provide, will help provide solutions to real-world problems. Not every area here represented can do that, or both to be able to do that. However, I can read you another document that, in fact, does imply this, very specifically. Paragraph three, "The new framework will better align various initiatives and provide a coordinated approach to addressing issues such as poverty reduction, immigrant integration, training, apprenticeship enhancement, and increased access for underrepresented groups." This is from the mission of Algonquin College, and then its next five-year plan. These are real-world problems. I'm not sure that we are ready in this institution to address problems such as these. So, my question to you is, basically, are you really implying here, since you mentioned that there were not going to be any reductions in faculty or changes in the faculty, are you really planning to restructure the whole future of this university in view of defining dreams and this particular clause, that we need to be focused on real-world problems from now on?
Well, I'll make a comment, and then if there's any members of the committee who want to comment as well. The focus on innovation and developing solutions to real-world problems is not mutually exclusive. And of course, innovation is very broad and can be identified towards solving problems, or it may not be. So, those are not meant to be, that you have to do both. I would, you know, in a lot of ways, you're doing both, but it's not necessarily, so it's not meant to be restrictive, but it also does draw on something that was highlighted within the strategic plan. That's one of the four pillars of the strategic plan, is solution to real-world problems. And as you've said, real-world problems have huge implications. You know, global climate change is a real-world problem, as you say, poverty is a real-world problem, war, peace, human rights, justice, all of these things, lack of literacy, lack of numeracy, you name it, women's issues, they're all real-world problems. So, I don't really see it as a hugely constricting issue myself, and, you know, I think it's actually, it's strategic, but I don't see it as being as restrictive as you're suggesting, and I know that you had a lot of discussion about that when the strategic plan was being developed. And certainly, the comments we've received from people submitting to our committee have been quite supportive of that, and seeing, in fact, many people have said, our program is dealing with real-world problems. So, I don't see it as restrictive as you do, Angela, so I'm not, but I, maybe if just other committee members might want to comment, I don't know if you do, but.
Can I ask a brief follow-up?
Okay.
My question really had more to do with the future hirings of this.
Well, the future hirings of the university.
With regards to this particular statement.
Yeah, I mean, hirings are dealt with primarily at the unit level. And so, when faculty get together and determine what are the best types of expertise that they're looking for, for their programs, you know, that's where that emanates from. There's a huge, big discussion process around how you, you know, get a new hire. And so, you know, faculty and departments and units are going to be strongly engaged in that process, so, you know, the strategic plan is not about the president or the vice president saying, you will hire this person in this area. I mean, that's, what it is doing, though, is engaging with and influencing and contributing to the discussion that the academic community determines in the end as to what is the right type of hire that we want. And I would think that we are, in fact, hiring, you know, in some areas, quite different faculty than we were hiring ten years ago, fifteen, twenty years ago, but that's because of the evolution of the academic community, not because of anything that a, any president or any vice president has ever done to direct it. Okay?
I'm Eileen Saunders, I'm the Associate Director of the School of Journalism and Communication, but for nine, almost ten years, I was also an associate dean of the Faculty of Public Affairs, at one time, Public Affairs and Management. I guess I want to first thank the members of the committee for having given up your summer to work on this report. Anybody who's been involved in administration will share your pain, and we do appreciate the time and effort that went into it. I have two brief comments and then two questions of clarification. I guess one of, in terms of a way of a comment, one of my disappointments, I guess, in the report, was I was hoping to see an answer to the question of what was the problem we were responding to in the first place, which I don't really think has ever been answered. I mean, I understand in a sense that restructuring was a solution that was offered in the mandate, but I'm not sure what the originating problem was, and in some ways, your solutions are a response to problems. So, if that could be clarified of what that was at the beginning, it perhaps would help in the feedback. For those of you who lived through steps to renewal and that restructuring, we knew what the problem was, and we were responding to it. So, I was disappointed not to see that stated. I guess the other comment I have is about the process. I mean, this is a major initiative, and it did take place over the summer, when many of our colleagues are not here, they're away doing their research or whatever, and so are not fully engaged with this. I mean, the report came out late Friday afternoon, we're meeting today, and we have to have our feedback in by Thursday. So, if we want to try and coordinate within our units of feedback, which is thorough and has a chance to interrogate the report, we really don't have much of a timeline. So, I appreciate the comments about consultation, but there really has been quite a time squeeze here. Moving on to the questions, my first question, both of them really are about ambiguity in terms of the report on two areas. One is the status of colleges. It really isn't clear in the document what you mean or intend by this new organizational form. At one point, you refer to it in terms of an informal network, and yet, it's not clear are these going to be programmatic in nature, or is it simply a network for collaborating among researchers? If it is programmatic, then how are they going to interface with faculties and schools or departments or institutes? And I guess on that point, we have two very successful models of colleges at the undergraduate level in FAS and in FPA, and yet, this is clearly not the model that is being used. And in fact, you begin by saying you want to clear up the inconsistency of terms, and yet, this seems to introduce a new inconsistency of how we're using colleges. So, I do have a question about the status of what is really meant by colleges. Are we expecting that they would deliver programs, for example? The second question is regarding the status of schools. It seems to be that we're talking about introducing a new level of bureaucracy. Is it the intention that departments would all be absorbed into some kind of super-school structure? If not, are we introducing two classes of academic units, schools and departments, which is certainly the model that our sister institution down the canal uses? Schools there are of a type which are, in a sense, more powerful than departments and clearly have consequences for departments in terms of how resources are allocated. If, on the other hand, the intention is everybody becomes part of a school, I guess my reaction there is it seems counterintuitive to one of the strategic objectives in defining dreams, which is we have to increase our retention rates, because certainly, the research that I'm aware of on retention says that students are going to feel, in a sense, more sense of belonging, the better you can identify them with their academic home, a unit. And if we are creating these mega schools and removing the smaller institutes and departments, then I think you're going to run into problems in terms of that identification of a student with their unit.
No, those are all good questions. I think the issue of the problem, I think we struggled with that too, didn't we? And I think we came to the conclusion that while there was, there were some problems being identified, we were thinking of this more as an opportunity. We have a new strategic plan in place, we have a number of decanal positions that are vacant, and before we move on hiring for those positions, if we were going to make any changes as an institution, it would make a lot of sense to think about that before we went out and hired deans. And it's not a bad thing to do to kind of reflect every now and again on your academic structure and your makeup. It's actually, you know, if you look at quality assurance processes, they say you should do this on a regular cyclic basis, and that it's always appropriate to take some time to look at what you're doing and how you're doing it. So, I think as a committee, and please feel free to disagree, because we haven't sort of come to any hard and fast conclusion on this, but my view is, as a committee, we kind of said, well, let's look at this as just an opportunity, as opposed to trying to fix a problem, or any one problem or any group of problems. All nodding, so is that, have I capsulated the discussion? Okay. So, I think that was where we were a bit on that. So I think that was where we were a bit on that. The questions you ask, I think, are all very, very good ones, and they're all ones that we need to take into account as we look at what it is we're trying to suggest here. Certainly, I don't, we haven't fleshed out these ideas long enough to know, so would these colleges offer, these strategic colleges, these institutional colleges, offer programs? I think our senses know, and that's why we were talking about them as networks, because they would really network together other programs that exist across the university. Because remember what we were trying to do? We're not trying to create, we're not saying we're not going to do faculty restructuring, so what we're going to do is create mega faculties, it's just we're going to call them colleges. What we're trying to look at is a mechanism by which you can cut across the, in a horizontal way, the rather vertical structure in which the university is organized. And so I think our view at this point is that it was not our intention to have these colleges become governance units or to become things which would report to Senate, but rather they would be facilitators of strategic themes across the university, and they would not be offering programs on their own. And your comment about the schools, I think, is a very real good comment. I think that that's something really that we need to look at. Right now, we have two tiers. So in fact, we have a number of different tiers of departments and schools. For example, I mean, departments, schools report to Senate in a very different way than departments and institutes report to Senate. Some schools report to Senate differently than others. So right now, we've got a mixed system that is not deal with things in consistent way. So I think the suggestion is that if we look at the school unit as model, as the fundamental subfaculty unit, then the idea would be that all faculties would move to a school system. Now, you know, is that something that we should look at or is there some different way of doing it? But that's certainly the suggestion that we're trying to put out. And I think the comments that you raise and the concerns are all very valid, that we have to think about if indeed we were going to make that recommendation as part of our final report. So I really, I really thank you for those comments. I'll sort of go like this, I'm not quite sure who came up to the mic, but where you are, okay, there we go. You don't mind, do you? I'll take you next.
Okay, thanks. My name is Rhiannon Mahon. I'm the Director of the Institute of Political Economy, and I want to begin with four points of applause and then move to one point of concern. I really strongly applaud the decision or recommendation to retain the existing faculty structure. I really laud the emphasis on the fostering of horizontal interdisciplinary, interfaculty collaborative networks. I likewise am very, very pleased to see the recognition of the importance of the Faculty of Graduate Studies, which is essential if Carleton wants to remain or to be a research intensive institute and fight off the Big Five. And finally, a point I hadn't noticed until I heard your presentation, I'm really, really pleased to see our recommendation in favor of creating financial incentives for interdisciplinary work, because the current budgetary system, in fact, works against that. So those are my four points of applause. My one note of concern has to do with the suggestion that the small institutes might be rolled into schools. This may work very, very well for some of the units you talked about, like the School of Life Sciences or Environmental Studies, but it would be really death to the Institute of Political Economy. I'd like to explain why, I should probably tell you a little bit more about what an institute is at Carleton. The Institute of Political Economy actually follows the classic Carleton definition of what an institute is. An institute has no faculty of its own. All of our 48 faculty members are cross appointees, with one exception. All of those are zero, 100%, and they come from 11 different units. So in a sense, the institute is a living embodiment of precisely the kind of horizontal, collaborative, and actually cross-faculty structure, because we bring together people from Faculty of Arts and Social Science and Faculty of Public Affairs. So we create a kind of a horizontal network of faculty. We do the same thing with regard to students, two ways. One is that we, instead of developing a standalone PhD in political economy, we're one of the first units to get a collaborative graduate program. And a collaborative program brings together students, in this case, from seven at the moment and nine in the future, when law and social work get their PhDs. It brings together students from all those different units in working together in a core course and a number of different kinds of other things that knit them together. Moreover, every year, we have a graduate workshop in political economy, which the institute hosts, but the organizing committee brings together students from law, geography, political science, sociology, anthropology, Canadian Studies, history, and the like. So again, we bring together students, again, in a horizontal collaborative network. But the most important reason why the institute actually has to retain its organizational and administrative autonomy has to do with our core course, which is a core program, which is a master's program, and it is a standalone master's program. Our autonomy is crucial for three reasons, and this is, I'm going to wind up on this, I promise. The first reason is it gives it the visibility to recruit students, and we bring in some of the top students as Dean Shepherd would tell you, we hit well above our weight when it comes to bringing in external awards. And we're able to woo students away from York and prestigious international universities, precisely because we can offer a program which gives them a home. They aren't sort of buried under concerns with more prestigious PhD students or the large numbers of undergraduate students. So we can recruit good students because of that. We can retain and nurture them, partly, we have, the program structure is there's only two core courses that the students take in the institute. They take the rest of them scattered out across the faculties of Public Affairs and Arts and Social Science. So the core courses are really important, the director plays an important role, but the administrator is absolutely essential. And one of my students had to leave, but if you could hear the students, you would hear how crucial that person has been to making them feel that they actually belong somewhere and to nurturing them. So when they leave the program, they leave a lot stronger, both intellectually and socially and so on. And the final point is, a reason why we shouldn't be folded into something else is, a lot of our students come in with BAs in political science or political science and economics. As much as I love my colleagues in political science or sociology, we shouldn't be moved into one of those units either. Most of our students, or a good portion of our students, in fact, go on to do PhD degrees in other disciplines, geography, science and technology, communications studies, a wide range of things. If you sort of put us under something else, that kind of openness disappears. So that's my final point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody want to comment on that? I don't want to. Because we had quite a lot of discussion about institutes and how some of them are real models of the kinds of collaboration we were talking about, but I don't know if anybody.
I'll comment briefly. Let's get on to Michael.
Sure.
I want to comment briefly and in a way that I think will be very uncontroversial, and that is that what we heard a lot of through the many meetings where we had people come in, was success stories exactly like that. And we were struck by how many there are at Carleton, and I have to confess, I was amazed how few of them I knew about, and I think we all felt that way. And what we noticed was two things. One is how strong the consensus was on this committee across, you know, six faculties, I guess, including grad faculty, a bunch of really different people, plus administrators, students. And it didn't take a lot of hard debate to get the consensus. I mean, it was almost spontaneous because the strengths were so clear. And what we heard was also was the goodwill and the enthusiasm and, but the success stories. But we heard a couple of things. One was that the success stories happen best when they are ground up, when they're not designed from above. And that's exactly what you're saying, and that's exactly what we heard a lot of times. So maybe we got, you know, this has been a rushed process, and so maybe we got the wording wrong in a way that's getting people's, you know, raising anxieties, and that's our responsibility. It's not your fault, it's our fault if we've done that inadvertently. But what I think our hope is, so what we came away from was a sense that what we're being, and so we had a sense that, one, things happen best when they're ground up and that people develop those affiliations themselves in very genuine ways. But also, people often said, "But, you know, it's not perfect. Inevitably, when you're working across faculties or across departments, there are problems with resources or this or that. How do you get this dean to pay for that session if it's not in his or her budget?" All that stuff, and that's inevitable anywhere. So can you make that easier? Can you facilitate those things? Can you create seed money to help grow these programs? And I think, people can tell me I'm wrong up here, but I think there's a pretty strong consensus that that's where we're at, that we wanted to find ways to protect those and to develop them and to nurture them, and not to say, and make sure that they continue to be bottom up, because that is the real strength that emerged very quickly from so many people that we heard from. But people also said, "Find ways of giving us better public prominence or giving us institutional homes." So it's not that we're trying to create, there's no subtext here where there's going to be a kind of planning exercise to lump you or anyone else in with some other program that doesn't want it. But I do think that there was an appeal to think, you know, about, without insisting on them, ways that we can facilitate these things institutionally, do a bit more to create homes for these, and also to create profiles for them outside Carleton. So I mean, I don't feel that your concern, I mean, they may be absolutely legitimate in terms of what we've communicated to you, and that's our responsibility. But I don't think you need to worry that we're unsympathetic. I think that there's a lot of support for that from the committee.
Thank you. Yes. Sorry, Steve, did you want to say something? Okay.
I'm Brett Stevens. I'm a professor in mathematics, and I have a couple of things that I just want to express that are, I guess, aspirations that I'm hoping that the committee will think about and that I'm hoping will be prominently visible in the final report. They're mainly on the subject of interdisciplinarity, incentives, and innovation. I do some research with some biologists here at Carleton. I also do some research with some people in engineering. I like to think that both of those are innovative and interdisciplinary. And in both those cases, I also have some realistic hopes that these things might solve real world problems or generate or help stimulate the economy or something like that. But I really feel that it's very important that we recognize that there are other kinds of innovations and interdisciplinarity that may not generate revenue or stimulate the economy, but are equally important. And this really kind of clicked for me today because this morning, I finished the page proofs on an article that I'm having published on Samuel Beckett and his use of mathematics. And I know that's innovative, but I don't know that that'll ever generate money. But I would hope that my university would want to support that kind of innovation as well as what I do in engineering with software testing, which has, you know, very practical, palpable kinds of consequences. And there was some discussion of financial incentives, and I think that I should really make the point that when it came time for me to try to do something interdisciplinary between mathematics and humanities, the main thing I did not need was money. I needed time to learn the language of a new discipline, not a border discipline to mathematics where I probably can learn it quickly. But I had to start to understand things like postmodernism, and I had to understand, you know, reference within literature and how that kind of moved around. That took time. It's not always money that we need to be innovative or interdisciplinary. Much of the time, what we really need is time. And I really hope that there won't be too much focus on things that have economic or financial importance. There'll be equal amount of focus on things which may not generate money and things which don't need money to stimulate them but need other kinds of nurturing. I don't necessarily expect an answer, I just wanted to say those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, Chris. I'm Chris Brown from the Department of Political Science and the Institute of African Studies. Actually, Eileen has stolen some of my thunder, so I do want in part just to say I very much agree with Eileen's comments. I have two additional comments. First, with respect to the themes in defining dreams. I'm personally most interested in the theme, what was the name of it, global studies, development, globalization, international affairs, international relations, this kind of network of connected themes. I think this is one of the real strengths of Carleton at both the graduate and undergraduate level. I think the fact of the matter, however, is that in the last few years, we're getting beaten up by Ottawa U in this area. They've moved very aggressively, as people know, to found a number of new schools, new programs. They've hired aggressively in that area, and especially at the undergraduate level. We have not been responding at all. And I do, I'm not, I agree with Eileen's comment about the ambiguity of what you're talking about in terms of schools and colleges and exactly what type of institutional structure you might be talking about. But I would certainly urge the committee that whether it's a school or whether it's a college or whether it's an interdisciplinary program or what, we need to be moving very aggressively, to be counter-programming, especially at the undergraduate, but also at the graduate level, to what Ottawa U is doing in this area. It is an area of our strength, but it's not an area where students looking at us from the outside would be able to tell that. And we're not offering the types of programs that can bring them in. There's been talk about, you know, creating some type of undergraduate School of Development Studies. As I say, the Institute of African Studies is newly created. There's talk about creating other area institutes. I certainly would favor putting those under some kind of larger umbrella that would bring together area studies from around the entire world. I'm not sure exactly what the mechanism should be, but whatever it is, it's an area we can't ignore, and I would certainly advocate that we need to be thinking very hard and moving very aggressively in this area. My second comment is with respect to graduate studies. I think all of us can agree that we need to be emphasizing this and doing everything we can to promote graduate studies and research. However, I'm a little bit concerned, and I'd like to hear more, about the idea of bringing graduate-only units under a new faculty of graduate studies or whatever the institutional arrangement would be. It seems to me that that proposal rests on a false premise. And the premise is somehow that it's the graduate-only units, they're only the graduate-only units are doing graduate studies and research, and that the mainline departments that are teaching at all three levels, undergraduate, MA and PhD, somehow aren't part of the graduate enterprise. And I think that if we made that type of distinction, we'd be making a grave error. So yes, we need to be doing everything we can to support and promote graduate studies and research, but I'd be very cautious about setting up that kind of distinction between units that are engaged in that sort of activity and other units that are not. So just a comment.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yes.
Andrew Brook, cognitive science and philosophy. Let me first of all, share the gratitude that a number of people have expressed for you, people sacrificing your summers to this cause. I'm glad it was you and not me. Secondly, a number of universities have tried this horizontal, very broad-based but very powerless, relatively structureless kind of administrative apparatus to try to connect people with similar interests in different parts of the university. And sometimes they haven't worked very well, and I think it would be good to look at some examples where this has been tried. A third comment I want to make is a very quick one. I share the concern that adding a new meaning to the word college and using the word school in a new way is not going to be a contribution to resolving, shall we say, terminological inexactitude at Carleton. We have a long history of using.
Could you be more specific?
We have a long history of using a lot of big words in a number of different ways around here and in ways here that are very different from the way they're used at other places. And I think proliferating the use of terms like school and college probably isn't going to help. But the real comment I want to make is that, as I see it, I think there are some fairly deep-running tensions in the activity that you people are engaged in. On the one hand, there's the appreciation for bottom-up building that Paul expressed so eloquently. On the other hand, we have these four strategic themes, and those two don't fit very comfortably together. Then there is the four strategic themes and other areas of strength at Carleton that are, whose activities are not included in those four themes. And it's the latter one that particularly concerns me. And so I guess my most important question about this exercise is, what happens to well-developed areas such as Rhiannon's or such as the unit that I used to head, that are multifaculty, interdisciplinary, contribute to the solution of real world problems, but whose activities are not part of any of the four themes?
You go on. You know, I mean, basically, I think, I know you had some of that similar discussion when the strategic plan was being developed, and I think when I heard the webcast, I had the president respond in the same way, that. president respond in the same way, that none of that stops and all of that continues. And, you know, a strategic direction is, you know, it, by defining strategies, you're not then excluding everything else that goes on. I think it's a challenge to ask, you know, for people to ask themselves, how might I be able to contribute to that strategic area and maybe in some ways that I hadn't thought about? And we heard quite a bit of that, of people who said, at first, I didn't think it had anything to do with me, but now perhaps it does. But it doesn't mean that you stop doing all of the other things that you do. You continue doing it, and in fact, sometimes you might be a model that would define a future strategic theme, because one of the thing about strategic themes is that, and we mentioned this in the document, that if you define something around a strategic theme, you better be prepared to change it at some point when that strategic theme is no longer relevant, or that perhaps it's shifted in a whole new way, and you need to do that. So you continue doing that.
Sure, just to follow up very quickly, I don't see the strategic plan or defining dreams, shutting down units or anything of that sort. But presumably, it is intended as a mechanism to steer resources away from certain things to other things. And the way to steer resources to some things, you have to steer them away from other things because we're in a very tight resource situation. And looked at from that point of view, what's going to happen to the units that will not be the beneficiaries of the steering effect of the strategic themes?
Well, I mean, you know, all units, you know, contribute to the university in a variety of different ways, and as long as they are contributing and playing their part and attracting students and doing good academic work and good scholarly work and good teaching and good research, and they continue to go on. I mean, the only point where I think your question becomes relevant is if a unit is engaged in a program that has no students, is not doing much in the way of scholarly research, and is not really pulling its weight. But that's a, that's a different, a different issue to what you're saying. So I, you know, what I would say to you is that successful units will continue to be successful, and the ones that are not successful, there's always a challenge for them to look at ways that they might become more successful, and sometimes looking at how they might align with a particular strategic direction or a different way of doing things than they've done in the past can be a sense of renewal to a, to a unit. So, but I think if you're just simply going to, you know, take the academic argument, which says, you know, what happens to these units that are doing all these things, they're successful and that, they'll continue, continue to do them, and they will certainly compete for resources, and if they're successful in bringing in students and being both undergraduate and graduate, they will continue to, you know, to make good arguments and successful arguments for their share of the resources. Yes?
I'm Joan de Bardleven from the Institute of European, Russian, and Eurasian Studies, and I think it's not coincidental that two speakers we've had are from institutes from the Faculty of Public Affairs, and I would, I'm going to pick up on some of the points that others have made, but try to maybe push them a little bit further. I think in our institute, in our faculty, our institutes have been particularly innovative, and I won't repeat all the arguments about my institute that Brienne made about hers, but I would just support her points in relation to our institute. But going on to some other points. I was happy to see the faculty restructuring seems to be moving off the table, and I was reassured by many of the comments that have been made so far today. But I think we still have to be quite cautious in moving forward. The issue about problem-solving versus seeking opportunities, I appreciate the committee was given a mandate, and you've had to go with it and try to find opportunities to use this in a constructive way. But I think we want to be very careful that we don't breed or generate a whole new set of discords within the university with this exercise, that, you know, one of the things that led to this exercise was to try to deal with some conflicts that people felt were around, and if at the end of the day we generate a whole new series of conflicts with this exercise, I think that would be a very destructive action, because at this moment, we've had a lot of turmoil in, at Carleton. We all know this. We've had a lot of change in the administration. We are still undergoing adjusting to that, and many people would just like to have a stable environment where they can do their best with the resources and structures that we have in place. Now, it's not to say there should be no innovation at all. I'm just saying in terms of structures, but that we should be cautious about that, and I think that's partly why people like Rianne and I are reacting so strongly, is that we do feel a bit under threat. And it would be very reassuring if the document that were issued would include those reassurances to units that are performing in line with the, with the kinds of criteria that you lay out, because a document takes on a life of its own, and if it sits on the table saying institutes may be folded into schools, somebody else might pick that up and not read it with the subtlety with which you intended it. Maybe there are some institutes who would benefit by being put in schools, but, but we don't think ours would, and we would feel that this would be great harm if this were to rise from the ashes at some point as something a committee had approved. Now, I have equal concerns about this idea of schools along the lines of what Eileen said, is that, you know, either of those two scenarios that she outlined, either having schools privileged above departments or trying to move all units into schools within faculties, would be a very highly contentious endeavor, the benefits of which I think are not clear. Just because there's an opportunity to change, if there's no benefit, clear benefit, clear and unambiguous benefit, is a risk, is the risk worth it of trying to figure out how we could move all of these different units into some kind of configuration within the faculties that we're actually trying to maintain and which we think are valuable mechanisms? So I would be very wary of that prospect. Then, as far as success stories go, I would say, why not look at some of our success stories? In other words, rather than trying to generate a series of new kinds of institutional structures, which ones have worked well for us? The two colleges we have have worked well. Could something be done to build on that success rather than generating a new model? The institutes that we have have worked, they're ideal examples. I mean, I could cite every single thing that Rianne mentioned for our institute. They've worked as very good vehicles of interdisciplinarity. Is there somewhere to build on that? Maybe not the exact thing, but something that builds on that success, draws on it, and tries to replicate it in other areas. Another thing, one reason I was so keen to have the Faculty of Public Affairs maintained is you talked about initiatives from below. Can we build on that? The reason that our Institute of European, Russian, and Eurasian Studies and our Center for European Studies has been able to bring in so much grant funding is because our deans, when we went with initiative from below, supported them, and so did graduate faculty, and so did the vice president's office. Those are good examples of supporting initiatives from below, not just in terms of innovation, but in terms of cross-disciplinarity. So we should look at some of our successes, right, rather than trying to necessarily create entirely new ones. I agree with Chris's point, Chris Brown's point, about hiving off graduate units into a separate, a separate kind of line of response of, of reporting or whatever hierarchy of hierarchical structure directly to graduate faculty. I think it would mean we wouldn't be interfacing with those units. If we had, if we had some of our strictly graduate students reporting to the graduate faculty, not sitting at our board in public affairs, we would lose a great deal in terms of cross-disciplinarity. So I would just appeal to you to, I know caution sometimes, you know, maybe it sounds conservative, and I'm not a conservative person, but I do think that in this case, at this particular point in the history of this particular university, we would be well to try not to do change for change's sake. And to come up with things, if there's nothing you can think of that's new, well then build on some of the things we're doing. But please be careful in terms of raising the level of tension and the level of discord within the institution. And I'm sure that's your intent, but, and I appreciate your comments and your efforts to move in that direction, but just, you know, hearing it from the outside, sometimes it sounds a little bit different. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joan. Does anybody want to comment before I go? Yeah, okay. We've got, I have about eight minutes to three, and I think we're supposed to finish at three o'clock, so I think I have one question here, and then one here, and then that should be time. Thank you.
Denise Carmen from civil and environmental engineering. I guess the committee's name is administrative and academic restructuring. I want to address comments to the academic programming side a bit. I think your, both the mandate and also in your recommendations, interdisciplinary and innovative academic programming, you know, plays an important role. And I appreciate the committee's, you know, cannot put everything on paper as to what they've looked at, what they've considered and so forth, but I would strongly urge the committee to look at at least the recent examples of innovative and interdisciplinary initiatives, programs that have been proposed, some of which have been successful in proceeding, some of which have not, and try to identify what has helped these programs and what might have hindered them in the timing and in the, in the process. As someone who has been involved in a number of these, my recommendation would be at least a clearer set of guidelines, rules, and more transparency in the system, regardless of any restructuring would certainly help.
Thank you very much. Comment. Okay, our final, does anybody want to comment on that? Okay, final comment.
Thanks very much. My name's Sarah Martin. I'm a second-year master student at the International, or the Institute of Political Economy. Thanks very much for all the work that the committee has done. I wanted to speak from a student's perspective about interdisciplinary work and the work that I've done at the institute and also as an undergraduate here at Carleton University. I've had an absolutely fantastic experience, and so I was really gratified to read the document and the push on interdisciplinary. I also would like to echo a number of things that people have said about that we have successes working right now, and, and I was gratified to hear from the committee as well about how these things come from the ground up. And just, I just want to make one small comment, is I think often from an administration point of view, when you're looking at a large, complex institution like Carleton University, you can't always see the sort of bubbling and perking that happens from the ground up, and I just wanted to make sure that you take a careful look at the successful institutes that are working well. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming and for those who have spoken and given us your comments or concerns, and for all of you who I'm sure you're thinking about what you're going to get on the email and send in to us, and I do encourage you, encourage you to do that. I will make just one comment, and that is that I think that all of us on the committee were really pleased and, and taken aback by the level of successful collaboration that is occurring in the interdisciplinary. And we actually, we heard from quite a lot of people from institutes, and certainly the intent of what a document is was not to get rid of institutes by any means. Actually, we feel that they're extraordinarily important, and so we, but we certainly take your comments and concerns very seriously in terms of what would it mean if we were to take institutes and have them still as institutes, but part of a school? What would that mean in, for those institutes? And I think that's something that we would have to look at very, very carefully as to, as to what that would mean in terms of the ability of the institute to operate and to function. So finally, I just would like to say that I want to give my thanks to the members of the committee, because this has been, I must admit, when I got here and said, oh, now you're, you're chairing a restructuring committee, I was wondering quite what that would mean. And, and one of the interesting things for me has been that it's been like a crash course in learning about Carleton University and what's going on at the university, and it's probably a better crash course in it than I could have ever have thought, so it's been a very, very good learning experience. But the other bit that's been particularly enjoyable is working with this group of individuals who represent right across the university and again bring a wealth of knowledge and experience and concern and sensitivities and understandings about what makes this university so special and what it is we can do to make it even more special and to make it to be the greatest university that it can possibly be. And so I'd just like to personally thank all, every one of you for the time you've given to this, but also more than that, the intellectual contributions that you have made to this process and will continue to make, and I appreciate it. And on that note, perhaps we can all give them a round of applause and-- Well done. I know some of them were dragged kicking and screaming as to whether they wanted to be on this committee, so it's, it's an interesting experience. So thank you all very much. We look forward to your, your feedback, and we will be back in touch again. So thanks for coming this afternoon. Appreciate it.